Good morning.
Good morning.
And happy new year to everyone for 2013. For those who don't know me, I am Councilman Ralph Franklin, City of Inglewood District 4, and I just want to welcome you for being here on a Saturday morning. Before we start the meeting, I ask that everyone please rise and let's move the colors, and then I'm going to have one of our local pastors to please bless our food in this meeting. Everyone, please stand. Right hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as I ask Reverend Johnny Blakely to please come and bless our food in this meeting.
I don't want to see Satan.
Thank you Reverend.
Thank you. Praise God. Good morning. Inglewood residents and visitors, you all look like you've got a million dollars in your pocket. You must have a video for being here this morning. I want to give honor to God, Father, our Lord Jesus Christ. I want to thank this blessed this meeting this morning. Father, we just thank you for this meeting. We thank you for our councilman. We thank you for him that he will facilitate this meeting and all those that are guests here today. Father, we thank that this meeting will wisdom will go forward, knowledge will go forward as we share, and each person that is represented here will share the good news and news that we may all will be accounted for. Father, we just thank you and we praise you for the food. We thank you for the food that we are receiving. We're blessed that it nourishes our bodies and that it not harm us in any way. And Father, we'll give you all of the praise for what's going to take place in this meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please be seated. We have a very, very packed agenda. I was blessed to identify that when I started the coming up with the theme of our event today, which is entitled "Progress in the Making for the City of Inglewood," I galvanized some key individuals at City Hall as well as stakeholders throughout the city that have said, "We want to speak. We want to talk." And I think it's critical to identify that we are about positive energy here. We're here on moving the city forward. And as I vindicated, the theme again being progress in the making for the City of Inglewood. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize everyone, but I will do that as we progress. One of our key speakers that asked me to speak today, because there's some ballot issues that's going to come up in April that's directly involving the City of Inglewood, is none other than our distinguished City Clerk. Please help me welcome Yvonne Porter.
Good morning. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the councilman for allowing me to have the opportunity to speak to you this morning. I wanted to speak to you about two ballot measures that I have placed on the ballot for your consideration of approval. And the first one is charter amendment. They're both charter amendments. One is for publications and the other one is for the waiver of the read. The read of an ordinance. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about Measure P, and that's the one that's publications. In our charter, it states that we have to publish every ordinance. And that's fine when the ordinance is one page or two pages, because then it's like $150 to $200. But when it's 12 pages or more, it's $4,000 or $6,000. It depends on how much, how many pages you actually have. One of the, we have not particularly a lot of ordinances that have abundance in pages, but we do have a few, and from time to time, some pop up. The one that we have that's consistent every year is our salary ordinance. And it has about four pages of text and a fee schedule, which is about 11 or 12 pages. Depends on how much you can get. And this, I brought some of the pages, and I know it's kind of far for you to see, but this is kind of like what it looks like. I can pass it around and leave it so you could take a look. This is one, but it goes on and on. And so you get like an abundance of pages like this. And this is printed in the paper, and it costs way too much money. I don't have the budget for it, and we're trying to save money. And so I'm asking that we could get a yes vote for publishing a summary and a title in that we would house the rest of the documents, which we do anyway, in the City Clerk's office, and it's on the web. And we would also extend it to the library, which we don't currently have it at the library, but we do have it on the web and we do house it in our office. The next measure is a W, and that's the wave for the read. And the reason why I ask for that is because it allows the majority of the council to vote to make the decision if you read an entire ordinance, which is, this is the entire ordinance, which is multiple of pages, and you would end up reading the actual grid. And the grid, and I have to put my glasses on so I can give you an idea of what the, with this fee schedule, I call it a grid, it's actually a fee schedule. And it's a code number, and one is like 368 Senior Engineering Technician, minimum wage 2.6, 2, 6.5, minimum dollar 3.922, maximum 2.99. And so you go on and on. And I had to read this one, actually about a year ago. And I won't even go into the issue of why I had to read that, but I actually had to split it with my deputy because the fee schedule was so intense, and there wasn't enough water to quench my throat. And so I needed to have some help with that. And so those are the two measures I'm asking that you would consider them for a yes vote on P and on Measure W. And that would be the end. If there's any questions, I'd love to answer them, but if not, thank you very much for listening to me. I appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Give her a hand, please. And those items will be on your ballot on April the 2nd. So be sure to make a note of that. And you've heard the City Clerk's concerns and seeking the will of the voters in support of her recommendations. Next, I'd like to bring up a young man that wanted an opportunity to help lead the charge for the City of Inglewood, to get us out of our structured deficit that we've been dealing with. And that he understood that in order to do that, he had to have the will of the council as a whole, we've been called, and making sure that we are moving the city in the right direction. This young man has been very instrumental on making sure that we bring in quality retail, bringing in the retailers or developers that say we want to become stakeholders here and say that with the team effort that we do on the council, we can make that happen. Please help me welcome our distinguished Mayor James Buck.
Now, I would tell you that coming up on two years as mayor, and if I knew what I knew now, I would run for City Clerk. Because everybody loves a clerk. But, you know, coming up on two years, I really want to give my appreciation to Councilman Franklin, because he's really a business-minded, community-minded representative. He was supposed to be a full-time councilman. He works full-time for you, and I think you should give him a hand for that. Because as elected official, you're self-regulated, you're self-disciplining, and not everybody rises to that task. But in the last two years, we've made a lot of progress. We came from being close to not making payroll the first year I was here to balancing two budgets consecutively and the last time without one-time funds. And I want to give some credit to Artie Field, the City Manager, and our new Chief Financial Officer, Assistant City Manager, David Sparza. Could you guys stand up? It's my hope that when Mr. Sparza speaks, that he'll get to tell you about his background. We have really made a great effort to recruit quality leaders for the department. Louis Atwell is our Director of Public Works. And when we hired him, he reminded me, he was a number two in another city, but he reminded me of myself when I was a Deputy Chief when I went to Santa Monica. And these people are going to do great things for us. Now, when I came into office, you know, I was focused on residential sound insulation program development in the city. And we worked for probably 18 months to broker deal between Madison Square Garden and Staples Central Bible Church, and then to purchase the forum, which they did to the tune of about $22 million. And they intend to renovate it. The original budget was $50 million. Now, the estimate is going to be about $100 million. We're coming to the closing steps of working out an arrangement so they're guaranteed they'll have a workflow party, because as you know, Walmart is probably not the biggest fan in the city, because they weren't allowed to do their development, and they own the 60 acres across the street from the forum. And so we're about a week away from considering that as a body. And hopefully, you'll see construction begin the first two weeks of February, and we're looking forward to that. That project was a catalyst for this project here, Hollywood Park Tomorrow, which is slated to be about $650,000 square feet of retail, entertainment, 2,500 homes, four parks. But it had been installed since probably 2007. Well, the week we signed that development agreement with the forum, they had an infusion of commitments from Chinese investors to the tune, total tune of about $188 million. And so they're scheduled to go online late August, early September here. The last racing day will probably be in July. So those of you that love the ponies, get there between now and July, because that's going to probably be it. But this bodes well for the city, because once that project starts, you'll probably see a flurry of investment across the street on Prairie. And it's our hope that we can end up with our version of the growth. Residential sound insulation. You know, this program is very vital to our residents, because you know, we're heavily impacted by aircraft noise. And there were a series of agreements signed in the early 2000s between the city and Lawa and the FAA. And unfortunately, we got off track. Now, when I came into office, I asked Mr. Fields to commission an audit of the program, and he hired our former City Manager, Mark Weinberg, who actually went down in residence and state to find out where things really were. And the long and short of it is this. Here's how it works. We receive grants from Lawa, and we receive matching funds from the Federal Aviation Administration. And we prepare what's called a grant implementation program. We say, "We're going to design this many homes, and we're going to construct this many homes in this year, and we'll turn in an audit of what we did to get our next grant the next year." Well, because this is such a popular program, because it involves free air conditioning, windows, and so on and so forth, it became politicized to a certain degree. We were supposed to do noiseless areas first, and that would be the homes closest to the airport. Well, District 1 is the most populous district for voters, and that didn't sit well. And so the council designed a format, and it was within our purview to do it, where the individual council districts and the mayor would have so many, control over so much funds to do their work. Well, what it resulted in was instead of like 400 homes a year going to be designed and 400 homes being constructed, which is what our capacity was, that's probably our capacity, we ended up putting 1,000 homes in design, running out of money, and not being able to do construction. But because we did that, now we can't file our audit of our grant implementation plan because we didn't do construction on the homes we said we would. And so then we list our $9.2 million grant from Lawa for one year. And then what we did was go on and continue to exhaust the funds we had in the bank. And so now we're at the point where we're $36 million behind, and we've lost access to those funds. And we're about to run out of funds. We have about $9 million in discretionary money, but discretionary money is only to be used after you fulfill your commitment under the agreement to sound insulate the homes under the contour. So we're just stuck, and we went on year to year to year. And so I got hold of it. I met with the President of the Board of Airport Commissioners. I met with Gina Marie Lindsay, who is the Executive Director at Lawa. She used to be my boss when I was Assistant General Manager there. And I offered to let them bring their accountants in a house to audit our records to show that there was no misspending of money, but bad programming. And we found out a couple of things, that over the years, we offloaded employees that we could no longer report in the general fund into our sound insulation program. They had meaningful work, but we have one of the highest overheads around for the implementation of the program. Most programs, the contractor oversees it, and then those contract employees go away when the program's done. So we have several service employees, and that makes it problematic. And so what I'm doing right now is entering into a, try to devise an agreement with Lawa, which will include, you know, continued, the continued audits, that we will do everything we can to shrink our employee base in the program as we trip people out, not replace in a minute, to let a contractor take over management of the program and agree to regular reporting as it relates to our audits and our progress. And they have agreed, if this comes to fruition, it's our hope that we'll receive access incrementally to that $36 million that we've timed out, but equally important to the grants that are coming along the way. We hope to design an aggressive program so that we can get those thousand homes that have been designed into construction within a year's time. That would be, that's my goal, and I'm a very goal-oriented person. So this is something that could not occur ordinarily, because these funds are in a pool that are available to all the cities that are impacted by the airport. And they have a right to have funds that we don't use. And this is being done leveraged on my relationships and credibility with Lawa. And we hope to seal this deal sometime by the first part, second week of February. And so keep your fingers crossed. But basically, Councilman Franklin and myself, Councilor Allison's, we're the ones that vote for everything, but we're trying to move the city forward. It's one thing to criticize and to, to, what's the best way to put it? Well, my mother always said, "It's better to light one candle than to curse the darkness." And we're candlelighters, and we're getting to where we need to be, but sometimes you have to use diplomacy, maturity, and negotiations to get the things that you need for your citizens. And so we're getting there, but it's going to take a lot of work. So anyway, I don't want to take up too much of Councilman Franklin's meeting time, but I want to thank you very much for your time.
Do you have any questions for the mayor? Well, following the mayor's lead on the comments you just heard, it is critical that the council as a whole understands, if you're going to move this project, score, move the city forward, it requires being a creative thinker, to think outside the box. And also, as you've heard the mayor speak, it requires also have networking. And if you don't have that kind of support outside the city, as you can see, it can have a domino effect on the quality of life for U.S. residents. And so I just want to commend the mayor and the council members and staff for their due diligence. Just like in your own personal life, you may have hiccups along the way, but you get back on track, and we're moving forward to that, I agree. And speaking of that, I wanted to identify that part of our presentations here today has to do with what you have concerns about, and that is, I want to see results. I want to see where my tax dollars are mine, and I want to see it now, or give me some kind of indication as to when I should see some development in the city. Rather than you just constantly hearing from me all the time about, "Well, we're doing this, we're doing that, and we just need for you to have the patience to do," and it will then transpire. I thought it would be critical that I be successful and be able to bring the parties behind the scenes that make it happen, and that's part of our city staff. So today, I will introduce one gentleman, and then he will bring in his team to share with us how we work together with improvement of the City of Inglewood and U.S. residents improve your quality of life. So please help me welcome this morning, our City Manager, who just joined us a little over a year ago, Mr. Artie Fields.
Good morning. You're in Inglewood. Thank you, Councilman Franklin, for inviting me to speak today and my staff. This morning, I'll be introducing our team of staff people, but before I do, just wanted to set some context for what they'll be talking about. The city has come a long way since the recession in 2008. Many cities were devastated by the recession, and in fact, you've probably heard about a number of cities that filed bankruptcy. The City of Inglewood has been able to sustain its facilities, albeit at a reduced level. Part of the reason why we've been able to do this is because of the financial prudence of our early, our leaders, you know, years ago, who basically amassed about $30 million in reserves. Most cities have reserves that they can financially afford to do so, and Inglewood was lucky in that regard. And so during the time of recession, we were able to continue services while we do lack enough reserves. Those reserves helped us for the last four years to maintain services, even though a number of those services have been reduced. You're all probably aware that the City Hall is closed every Friday, employees are pro loan. In fact, that saves us about $3 million a year. We've also closed a fire station, which as a result, is going to stay in about $2 million a year. So while we reduce some services, the City Council will be very careful to make sure that we continue providing services and making them available to the public. So things are getting better, and I'm going to, our Chief Financial Advisor, talk more about that, but I will say that there's some things to give us rise to optimism. I'm going to go over some of those positive projects that are currently on books right now. The first is a mayor already talked about in Hollywood Park, I mean, the forum, but what I'd like to do is talk about a project, a reminder of a major project that we started later on in this calendar year, which is our Hollywood Park project, the site that we're sitting on right now, which is about 238 acres of land. And so what we'll be doing is we'll be building about 620,000 square feet of office space, about 3,000 housing units. And also, this facility that we're in right now will receive a major renovation. So that project will start later in this year and be a major catalyst for development throughout the community. In addition, as LA becomes increasingly more traffic congested, a lot of people are increasing their need for alternative transportation, and light rail systems are what LA is definitely putting a lot of priority on. And Inglewood is lucky in that we're going to have two new light rail stations coming to the City of Inglewood. One will be at the intersection of Florence and West, and the second will be at the intersection of Florence and La Brea. This is a $1.7 billion project, which will help make easy the transfers of our residents throughout LA County and the community a lot easier, and that should be happening. You know, construction's going to be starting very soon. It will not be operational until 2018. The next project I'd like to talk about that's giving a lot of momentum is what we call the D3 site, which is the intersection of La Brea and Florence. And that site has been empty for about 20 years, and there have been a lot of development proposals and a lot of optimism about, around what could possibly happen there, but nothing's happened. So currently, and we may have a tendency to move meetings, but we've had three community meetings, two, the big, basically, visiting committee meetings, to determine what is it the residents want to see at that site. And so we've had three so far. The next step is to take it to the Standing Commission for review and public comment, and then it'll be recommended to the State Council for review and public comment. And after that, we'll be sitting on RFP to developers. I can tell you there are a number of major development companies that are interested in doing projects there. Most likely, it'll be mixed use, which means housing and retail. In addition, it'll be very transit-oriented. So the goal is to develop the site so it takes advantage of the light rail system that will be right next door. Another project that's occurring here in Houston Franklin's District is the abandoned buildings at Prairie and 102nd. The city have approved a contract for demolishable buildings, and those will be happening by March of this year. So that'll be very exciting, and naturally, it'll do a lot to improve the look of our So with that, what I'd like to do right now is turn over to, and introduce our new CFO and Assistant City Manager, to give a little bit of his background and talk to you about our first quarter financials. David Sparza. Yeah, and Councilman Franklin, as you might have, when we use the acronyms at City Hall, a lot of people may not be aware of, but CFO is our Chief Financial Officer. And RFP is our Request for Opener.
Good morning. Thank you very much for having me as a guest. Councilmember Franklin, I very much appreciate the opportunity to participate and assist you in your presentation to the community, because I think these are very important opportunities for, you know, information to be passed from City Hall to the community. And so I do thank and welcome the opportunity to participate. Just briefly on my background, I come here from the City of Los Angeles, where I was at the Community Development Department and also the Housing Authority. Before that, I was with the City and County of San Francisco as the Assistant Finance Director at that time under Mayor Willie Brown, and then went to various departments at his request after that. So, I'm glad to be here in Ingle, and I very much appreciate the confidence that the mayor of the council and City Manager have given me, and I do appreciate that. I will not bore you, because the last thing I know that at a community meeting, people want to really hear from the bean counter. So I'll give you a very brief overview of where we are in this fiscal year. Our fiscal year starts October 1 and ends September 30. It matches the federal fiscal year, but it's a little bit off from what, you know, you would typically see in most jurisdictions. They're running from July 1 to June 30. But that being said, that just means that we're somewhat different, and I always want to make sure that people understand how we measure our progress through the fiscal year. And so at this particular point, we've really finished the first quarter of fiscal year 2012-13. And I'm very happy to say that we are, we are on track and actually doing better, because our revenues are tracking very close to what our budget accounts are, because, you know, when you establish your budget, you have to project your revenues, and so that is somewhat, you know, a little bit of soothsaying into the future, if you will. And so that's always, you know, a variable that you have to work with, but I'm happy to say that our revenues are tracking, you know, fairly closely to expectations and what we've actually established in the budget. On the other side of that, I also want to tell you that we're doing, you know, better in our expenditures. Our expenditures are tracking at 22% at this particular point, which if you were to match up the one quarter of the fiscal year, you know, we would expect to be around 25. So we're actually about 3% below expected expenditures at this point, which, you know, also, you know, kind of shows the austerity and the fiscal conservative prudence that the mayor of the council and the City Manager are directing. A couple things that, you know, I think that we should also say, because these, you know, basically are factors in our calculation, is that, you know, the real estate market, you know, appears to have started to level off, and actually, we're showing a, about a 1% increase in our property taxes, you know, in the first quarter, which, you know, I think is a good sign, you know, for everybody here as well as the city. Also, sales taxes are starting to come back, and again, these are, you know, large items that fall into the city's general fund and help support, you know, essential and critical services such as police, fire, you know, public works, and our parks. And so I think that that, you know, bodes well for the city and, you know, in its future. And with the, you know, fiscal prudence and, you know, maintaining, you know, very tight controls, I think that we will, you know, find ourselves inching our find ourselves inching our way out of this. Now, we have, Mr. Phillips has already spoken about a number of projects that will be coming on, and you'll hear more about them in the next speaker. But these projects will start to augment the city's both business community and its revenues into supporting its services. So I think that that's about all that I have for today. Unless there are questions, I'll take any of that. But again, I don't want to bore you with all the bean counter jargon.
The key is the financial health of the city. So we brought the gentleman up here that strictly overlooks all the financing throughout the city and all the departments. Any questions for the financial officer? Yes? We've got to get on the plane so we can back over here.
Can you just go over the speaker's announcement, county, Los Angeles, regarding the REITs, the homeowners taxes? Would that affect you?
Homeowners' tax? I have not heard about that. Was this a parcel tax?
It was a housing tax. The county was trying to assess that.
No, I don't believe that. I haven't heard anything, so I'll hedge my response that I have not received anything. Now, that may have applied to the county areas of the city, of the county of Los Angeles, and it doesn't go into the jurisdiction. Inglewood is an incorporated, chartered city, so it would have to have gone through our political process as well in order to affect our property taxes. Unless there, and I will say that unless there is some part on the parcel tax that is strictly for county assessments that we have in the detail.
Can you explain the county transfer tax? Is that a transfer tax?
Currently, the property transfer tax, and I think that's exactly what you're speaking of, is set by the state, and it's a tax on the transfer of property. It's typically assessed some value against each $1,000 of assessed property value. Now, right now, the city of Inglewood has a 55 cent per 1,000 assessed value that we receive. Now, the total tax is $1.10. And so we split that evenly with the county. The county gets 55 cents of that, we get 55 cents of that. So each jurisdiction has the opportunity to change that to fit its own needs. Now, the city of Redondo Beach, I know the city of Los Angeles, they have transfer taxes much higher than 55 cents.
And then also, maybe to comment to you, I'm concerned about, there was an item that the city council had looked at of increasing our transfer tax. We have since met back at City Council at a special meeting, and that item has been rescinded. So it still remains status quo.
Transfer tax related to the sale or transfer of a property?
Yes, it is.
Couple more questions and comments on that.
About the general fund budget, which is supported by direct taxes, is about $83 million per year.
Okay, we're going to move on. Let's give my hand quickly. And now we'll reach out to the city manager for his next question.
Yes, I just wanted to ask him regarding the finances, too, let him know how challenging it is. Every year, when we present the budget to the city council, we're based on, we have people who do a balanced budget. When this calendar has two balanced budgets, we're not like the state. We're going to run a whole weekend, project at all, we love the budget, and base it on future taxes or something like that. We have to know, we have to base it on our revenues that we know we're having, that we will have that up in the future year. For the first time, in anyone's memory that's at City Hall now, last year, our representative of the city council was there, who proposed a five-year financial forecast. And in that financial forecast, it's basically projected that each year, myself and the Chief Financial Officer will have to bring the proposal to the council to eliminate $4 million of our budget each year. So while things with the coin, revenues are getting better, based on trends that we know of in the next five years, we're going to have a challenge in having to reduce $4 million of our budget. Now, a large part of that is currently, we're going to keep in contracts with the barbing groups to continue the pro lube. There, it's really, as you can imagine, it's 10% of their salary that they've given up in order to save $3 million off a year. So that's really critical that we do that. And also, working with the county fire department to continue to provide quality responses from their agency. Without that, fire station is going to be critical as well. So just to keep that in mind, our last year's budget was balanced, as the mayor said earlier, not using reserves. In fact, we have no more reserves for the reason that we've had to use all the exhaust of reserves in order to continue services for the last four years. And so we will be presenting a new budget to the city council for the 13th, 14th of this year, which staff is already preparing. We'll be presenting that in August of this year, which is a couple months sooner than we normally do it. But with the help of our new CFO and his staff, we're trying to bring the budget to the council sooner, so the public can have more time to discuss options with the council as well. So with that, what I'd like to do now is talk and introduce our new Public Works Director. And I must remind you, the city has not had a Chief Financial Officer or Finance Director since I came on board about a year and a half ago. Before that, we had an interim Finance Director, and before that, there were issues in the department that caused them, are a bit, caused us to have to reevaluate how that department's being run. So we're lucky to have now this ability of having a Finance Director. In addition, our new Public Works Director is here. And after, again, I came on board a year and a half ago, we had no Public Works Director, a permanent Public Works Director, and we had an interim Public Works Director. In fact, we've had, I think, two of us in the last year and a half. So it's really great to bring this ability back to your organization. With that, I'd like to introduce our new Public Works Director, who, if that will be able to give us a background, and also talk about the processes from there.
City Manager, thank you so much, Councilman Franklin. Thank you very much for having me here today. I did want to speak today, because I think the message I want to share is, one, project delivery. We talk about project management quite a bit, but managing is, you can manage a store, you can manage different things, but not really deliver what you're managing. In this case, I want to deliver projects. And so I don't want to get into managing projects for years and years. I want to get into delivering projects in the city of Inglewood. I have a little over 20 years of experience. I worked in Las Vegas for the Water District in Las Vegas. I worked for the city of Los Angeles, like the CFO. I worked for LA Water and Power. I love LA Water and Power, one of the few people to leave LA Water and Power, because a lot of people that started DWP can stay there forever. But I wanted to get out. I was also a consultant for 10 years, so I worked on the private side as well. So I'm hoping the experience that I bring to the city of Inglewood pays off, and I think it will. But moving in the pudding, so we'll see. The Public Works Department, just real quick, the Public Works Department, we're responsible for all the infrastructure and ownership of assets of the city of Inglewood. We maintain, we operate the streets, the water system, the sewers, the traffic signals, the fleets, the police cars. One time, we had a fire department, we prepared the fire ranges. But we also construct projects. And with that, we construct those projects that are relating to water and sewer, as well as traffic projects. With me, I brought my two division managers, Armitar Rai, who's running the projector, because I can't run it from here. He's responsible for all the water utility projects, including sewer and storm drain as well, and also Keith Lockhart, the Division Manager in charge of streets, that includes traffic signals and also the construction of roadway. One of the projects that I'd like to start off with today is the Van Ness project. It's a major street rehabilitation project from Century Boulevard to Imperial Highway. This project is constructed in conjunction with Los Angeles County. LA County owns the east side of Van Ness. We own the west side of Van Ness. So to make it a consistent project, we've combined forces to do it as one project together. It's about one mile in length, and includes resurfacing. When we resurface a project, we either remove the top two inches of the street and then repave it, or if the street is very old and extremely bad condition, we remove even more so we can go down below the asphalt into the bedding, which supports the pavement. And so this project is about $1.2 million. The benefits are, it increases the roadway conditions. That way, you don't get as many potholes when it rains, unfortunately, but in this case, fortunately, it believes that. It also increases traffic safety, because we should get new signals out of it, new detection devices, and increase the mobility of the traffic along Van Ness. The schedule, it's currently under design, but we should be beginning construction by spring, summer of this year. The next project is the Imperial Highway Improvement Project. Like Van Ness, it has similar benefits. However, this project is about one and a half miles long. It includes the full width of the street. And because it includes the full width of the street, it's much more costly and it's longer. So in this case, it's very similar, it's resurfacing and reconstruction of the roadway itself. One I forgot to mention on Van Ness, we're also repairing the sidewalk. When we do a project in the street, we want to do the patches. So we do the sidewalk that's damaged, we'll repair that, as well as curb, weather, and sometimes stormwater. And the schedule for this project, we're currently under design, and however, because how large this project is, we're looking at construction beginning in summer of next year, 2014. Century Boulevard Mobility Project, one of the largest projects the city has undertaken in many, many years. I've inherited. So if it goes wrong, it's my fault. And then I'll blame these two guys. Actually, that guy over there. This project, essentially from east side to west side, along Century Boulevard, it is a full package project. It's a simple building, a brand-new road, brand-new sidewalk. This is not, it's a reconstruction project, but it's actually easier to build. When I worked for Las Vegas, I was building things out in the middle of the desert. A road out in the desert would be easier than this, because you're impacting existing traffic, you're impacting residents, and you have to demolish, you have to demolish what's there and build new. This project, when I came on board, had some issues with it, but because of public outreach, I think we've resolved many of them. One of them was, we currently have a six-lane road from one side to the other. And while this project was under design, it would be six lanes, four lanes, to six lanes, to four lanes, to six lanes. And with public outreach, I think with communication between me and my staff, and also Councilman Franklin, and the mayor, we've come up with something that we're going to go to council for on February 5th, to get rid of the four-six, four-six, and go with nearly, I would say, let me go second, six lanes all the way across, with New Medians landscaping the whole nine, and one area with five lanes. Okay, so two lanes on one side, three on the other. We can't get away from the two lanes. Now, the two lanes are in this area, unfortunately, because there's a fortunate link to it. Along with this project, we have to put a new sidewalk for pedestrian access and also for the disabled. By law, we have to do it, I think it's important that we do it, because being disabled is something we can, any one of us can become at any time. And so the area that would be five lanes would be between Crenshaw and Fifth. Okay, it would be two lanes on the south side between those two streets, a new sidewalk. However, if you're heading eastbound on Century, there would be a dedicated right-hand turn lane onto Crenshaw. So if you're coming home from work, let's say you work in Los Angeles and you're heading down Century, you would have six lanes all the way, and you would have six lanes all the way to Crenshaw, and then you can make your right-hand turn to get into District Four. So that's the best we can do. I wish we could do more, but I think it's a great compromise for where we were to where we are now. We'll find out in the Q and A session, right? So the benefits of, oh, we weren't there this whole time? The benefits of the project are, the project is almost $40 million. Now, this is not general fund money. This is money that comes from Measure R, comes from all these different acronyms, but essentially federal and state money, and also redevelopment money. And so we, we're not, it's not the city's tax dollars, it's like sales tax and property taxes paid for it. But the benefits of the project are, we finally get to be in ADA compliance, we have new roadway conditions, extremely improved roadway conditions, lighting, we have new drainage, so if there's any flooding on Century Boulevard, we're going to try and eliminate them. And we have improved pedestrian access and improved aesthetics. Nice landscaping all the way up in there. Currently under design, we're going to go back to council on February 5th to ask for additional monies to do what I just talked about, going with the six lanes for 80% of the 90% of the project. And we're looking at construction sometime, hopefully this year. It's tentative, but there's some things going on that may delay that, like the redesign. Traffic Signal Improvement Project, by the way, I have this, because I know this very, engineering is very boring, so I figured I'd try to put something. Now, I'm very boring, so I figured I'd put something up there. Traffic Signal Modification Project, we're going to improve the traffic signal in Crenshaw Boulevard and 104. We'll install LED traffic signals, so we save money on our electrical bills. I'm glad it isn't that great. And the estimated cost of that is about $30,000. And again, improve safety for drivers and pedestrians. And there's new loop detection, there's new detection that will be put there, so cars will be moving through the detection nicely. We'll construct this in a few months, and it'll be carefully put. That's how I can do it.
So staying with that, just want to make sure that you do a lot of talking, but I want to make sure the residents that live in the area have the true impact. When he said Crenshaw and 104, that is what you asked for regarding signal lighting for left-hand turn lanes. That's what we want to hear, and that's what the project consists of. When he said Van Ness, he meant the resurfacing on both sides of the street, both LA and Inglewood, from Century Boulevard on the north to Imperial Highway on the south. When he mentioned Imperial Highway resurfacing, he mentioned that it's going to be Van Ness on the east to Prairie on the west. And so as he indicated, that that is currently in a client, or what do you call it? That Imperial Highway is in design phase, but the actual construction will be in 2014. But for the Van Ness one, it's in this year's budget, so just want to be aware of that.
Sometimes I get going. I'm new, so I'm a little nervous, and I get ahead of myself sometimes. So please raise your hand and tell me to slow down. So is this, the Traffic Signal Improvement? Yes, it'll have the left-hand turn signal, as Councilman Franklin talked about. The Sidewalk Replacement Project, we're going to do about 1,000 feet within the district. All districts will have some sidewalk replacement repaired. And we're going to do about 43 driveway approaches, because the driveway approach is within the sidewalk. And we're going to do some ADA improvements as well, curb ramps on the curbs at the intersections on local streets. And the estimated cost of this project is about $30,000. The design is completed, and we should be constructing here within a couple months. As soon as the rain kind of settles. And then we have the resurfacing of local streets. This project is actually a combination of other projects, and trying to group projects together, so we can get the economies of scale, a bigger project to give better prices. This project will be going to council very soon. It's a street resurfacing project. It's a street resurfacing project, and it also includes curb and gutter reconstruction in the local, in the local streets, so in residential areas. And it's about 4,500 linear feet of streets that will be done in this district. It's almost a mile. On the water side, this is Bar Moshuar. We'll have a new groundwater well that we're currently designing. I think, I think it was the city manager that mentioned that some of the buildings will be coming down, demolition along Prairie. Well, one of those buildings that's going to come down will actually house a new well. And so, we'll have a new groundwater well in that area, just north of 104. This well will allow us to reduce our dependence on the Colorado River, which comes from West Basin Water. It will reduce the price of the, how much it costs for us to pay for water by about $300 an acre foot. By the way, an acre foot is, if you can imagine, one acre, about one foot, one foot deep of water. And so, we'll have a Yukon, about 1,250 GPM, and it'll cost about 2.5 million dollars. Well, it's a very expensive. And our design should be completed by sometime next year. And then we have the annual water system upgrade. We're going to replace several, a mile and a half of pipe on the streets within this district. As you can see, First, Third, Fifth, Seventh, Eighth, 101, 102nd, 104th Street. And that'll be about 1.4 billion dollars of pipeline replacement. Our pipelines here are extremely old. The good thing about it is they're cast iron pipes, which are very inert, meaning that it's very difficult for them to rust, but they're upwards of 50, 60 years. So, it's time to replace those pipes. And with the water rate increase that moves going into this, and it's going into, actually, a couple left, but one well specifically in this district. And it'll reduce the city's maintenance costs as well because a new pipe typically doesn't break. We're expecting construction in the summer of 2013. And then, like the water project, we have, or annual water pipe project, we have the sewer pipe project as well. And we have lots of pitchified plate pipe here in town. In this district, we have some on Yukon between 100 and Second and 104th, and on 107th Street between Crenshaw and 10th. We are either relighting those pipes or we are replacing them in time. And just like the water, it reduces the operation maintenance costs in the city, but it also reduces our sanitary sewer overflow, which is when the sewer bubbles up to the surface and spills into the storm drain. And we're currently under construction on this one. We may have not gotten to the streets that you live on, but eventually will if you live on those streets. Okay, with that, please, any questions? I have, do I have, still five minutes? Well, people take them and leave.
This is construction. He's all, first way up front, can you get a mic for us?
Yes. I'd like to know what will happen on Imperial Highway in 2014. What will we be doing? How will we improve that?
We will be resurfacing the street pavements and also improving the sidewalks, the curb and gutter, and the traffic signals. If I'm wrong, I expect my division manager to speak up. But I believe those are things that we will be doing.
Particularly with reference to, there's a main thoroughfare for schools. And if you know where Imperial Highway and Yukon's located, those, a couple of those curbs on the south side have not been shaved. And it has not because this will be part of the 2014 project. And we're going to also do the assessment, again, as he said, of all the sidewalks and intersections for the corners to determine whether or not ADA is needed. And again, I stress, it's all the way from Van Ness on the east to Prairie on the west, both sides of the street. Even though the south of the street is part of Hawthorne, we're still doing all of it together in a collective effort.
Okay, just one other question. I would like to know, are those cameras still working? As far as the mics are concerned, are the cameras still working?
I hope they're not.
Did one of them go off this morning?
I beg your pardon?
I'm sorry. Did one of them go off? Are they working?
Just so you know, there actually are 20 Red Flex cameras that still exist. We, as a city, had a contract with Red Flex, and we tried to get out of it legally. We worked with the help of our attorneys, and we found out we could not. So, we are now buying our time to honor the contract until it expires. And it will expire February 2014, and then we will turn off those cameras.
2014?
Yes.
Then can I ask one more question? I'd like to know, I'm sorry, but I'm just a novice.
Please use the mic, you can hardly hear.
I want, I'm. Oh, they're running around, okay. I'd love to know that building right there on Prairie and Imperial, what is that? It's a hotel? Someone says a hotel. It's on Prairie and Imperial.
Sure, so in the, that is the northeast corner. That is a new motel that's, that's, hotel, hotel. Is it called the Inn?
Okay, thank you there, Matt.
Thank you. All right, yeah, let me get it front. Okay, let's go right before, okay?
My question was partially answered, and I wanted to know the share of costs on Imperial Highway, which on the south side, after we pass Church or Yukon, comes Hawthorne. I want to know if Hawthorne, if they appear here costs for the project.
Can you come up and maybe answer that?
If I understand the question, you asked about the cost sharing carrying on Imperial Project, that would be entirely funded through funds that come through the city. They're not general tax revenues, but there are special funding sources to feed projects.
But the question is raising, and the answer to the question is yes. That this is a joint project, similar to what we have with the Van Ness project, while Caltrans, City Ball Center is involved. On this project, Imperial Highway, it'll be Caltrans, Hawthorne, and City of Inglewood involved. So, the funding will be appropriated for the, the grants or funds will be appropriated for that street. Couple more questions? Are you ready to mic? Yes, mic.
I live along Van Ness.
Thank you.
And I'm on Van Ness, and Van Ness is like the freeway. But on the Van Ness side, they, when they first purchased our home, some of the curb was red. And I just wondered on the project, are you going to keep moving the curbs to make it more red? Because the problem is that the residents that live there, they don't have places to park if they have guests. There's no parking. Because the street slims down, I guess, and they keep going further Van Ness, making the curb red.
I'm glad it runs back.
The, there will be no additional red curbs, no additional parking prohibitions on Van Ness project.
I have three more questions. This gentleman, this woman, and this lady here, I have two more questions.
Can you hear? I have a two-part question. My question is, I'm glad to see the light in the left turn light there, it's a light that's fourth. Because I've been in that area for the last few years, and I've seen them. Accident, kids almost hit. Last time, I almost got hit myself by someone there into the light. You can't be removing those flashlights. Because what happens, you know, you want to see the left turn over there. People will still try to make it through that flashlight to get past. And that's just an accident we have.
That question answered, I said earlier. I said earlier that we are in a contract with Red Flex. We have to make a monthly payment whether we get citations or not. And we have to honor that contract in the direction of our city attorney until it expires, which will be 2014. So, you're going to have your left-hand turn lane with a light, and, but you will not have a Red Flex camera discontinued until February 2014. Also, I do want to acknowledge that you had brought to my attention, I've done a lot of assessments to that area. If you know also on the, the north, sorry, the southeast corner, that there's a bus stop. And through the help of staff here, we was able to accommodate a number of people that are disabled that needed that ramp to be able to get onto that bus, we'll take care of that. But the reason why I really was pushing to get that left-hand turn lane is that it's extremely difficult when we have three schools that is right there trying to bring their children to Monroe Middle School, Woodworth, and Morningside High. And, and traffic's going, barreling down at 40-plus miles an hour going south on Crenshaw. And as you've indicated, some accidents happen. No different than when the residents told me at Century Heights, that when I'm trying to go home and I want to make my left turn coming off Crenshaw to go eastbound on 104, they're not able to do that. This will now accommodate your request if you guys really take care of it. The next question?
The next question is, one of the worst things we could have done is given him a request to, 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 because I don't, I think he got quite out. One of the things I said to listen, the entrance exit into Food For Less?
Yes.
On Century Boulevard?
You're the one, okay.
I don't know. That's an accident we have. And then people on fast track or something, do you have, keep clear?
Sure, so I've enlightened the residents that he had sent me an email, and I've responded to him. It had to do with the issue of trying to access Food For Less off of Century Boulevard. And the traffic going eastbound on Century Boulevard approaching Crenshaw, that when the traffic stops flowing, there's no yield to allow the people to make a left-hand turn into that intersection, into the parking lot. And so, clearly, there is different markings on the street. If you, it was, if it was an emergency purpose, such as we talked about in hospitals, in Florida, bar department needed to get out into the traffic quickly, but not in shopping centers. So, the question now before us is that can there be some kind of markings there to keep that, that area open when the, when the traffic stops flowing?
I can tell you this, I did receive your email from Councilman Franklin. And we're looking into it. Me personally, I think if we could do something like that, it would make it safer. And it would allow for traffic to move more smoothly because people will come out and they'll block traffic trying to go down there. So, we're looking into it right now. I've asked HE to look into it, so I can tell you that it has happened.
Okay, we have two more, is that ready here?
My question is, when we have the camera, camera, when we're at 100, right, down Prairie and Century together, there's a left-hand turn off of Prairie onto Century East. We have green arrow and the yellow camera flash. Who determines whether we give ticket for that?
We have a designated police officer from Inglewood Police Department. It's that officer that makes the determination whether or not a violation occurs. And it's that officer that makes his determination. And if that ticket is issued to you, he is the one that you reach out to through the city to have that reversed because of that. But sometime, these cameras do go off when they shouldn't have. And also be mindful, people think that because he approached the intersection where a Red Flex camera is located, that it covers all angles of movement, but it doesn't. They have specific design as to whether you make a left-hand turn or just go straight through the intersection to determine whether or not that's really part of the Red Flex camera operation. So, don't think that every intersection, any angle you have is a left-hand turn or go straight through the intersection, that, that Red Flex camera comes always. But in your case, if you make that left-hand turn off of Prairie going to Century, it is designed for that. So, if you do get that citation, chances are you won't because they have to re-watch and re-watch to make sure that was green by the, in the. Two more questions, I see Dorothy, and then you wait, or you're going to get another one.
I just want to clarify on Van Ness. I know you said it twice, but I, I guess it, so. Both sides of Van Ness, Century and Imperial will be repaid, or suggest, is it going to be Imperial Highway? Both sides?
Both sides, both sides.
And my next question is, relates to gentleman's question about getting, getting into the shopping center for who the last day. Now, there's a big wall there. Are there any plans to get a pass-through so that you don't have to come out one shopping center and get on Century Boulevard, go up to the next light, and go with that?
We tried that, answer questions, no. We tried that repeatedly, of trying to get the, the Hicken Company when the development was built, to be able to allow that access road to go straight through from one shopping center to the other. And it caught the poverty where the land is higher on Imperial Highway, on, by Food For Less. I saw it being lower by, by Carl's Jr. and the Home, the Royal buffet, that they said no. And so, it's at their discretion, and that's the way the project is, and that's where it will be maintained. One final question on construction?
No, I'm concerned Golden State Water.
Okay, they're, they're coming up next. Hold that up if you would.
Well, I sure will.
Okay, hold that water if you would. I would like this fair. All right, just give me on my end if you would. Thank you very much. The sad part about it is the question is how long will you receive Van Ness and others? I think it's very critical to understand that, right now, there's negotiations between the Hollywood Park Casino operator and the Hollywood Park Land Company that owns the property that the casino operates. There is now the discussions had about changing of the licensing of the casino. That being the case, the new licensee that may come on board may in fact want to change staff. And so, we have, they've come very close to the staff here, and I'm doing what I can to preserve them for a transitional phase. And they have it within the next 90 days. So, unfortunately, Vanessa Watkins and others have received a severance notice by the NOR Act that requires to notify them within 60 days that their employment may be in jeopardy. And as a consequence, they got their Christmas gift on that letter. So, please keep them in your prayers, and I can use your help as well. The other thing I do want to ensure I include is that, you heard them talking about the construction improvements, but I do want to add a few more. For those that live in Imperial Village, there's a number of streets in Imperial Village that have been identified for what we call slurry seal. That's going to be used to help preserve the light of the street. Certainly, all those streets are in there that will be done that. And it will give that street more life for another three to five years before the service will have to be adjusted. So, be aware of that. The other things I want to address to your attention, Avenue, we have to be manned by you. That's telling me that the neighbors are not good neighbors when they have a tendency of wanting to park their vehicles on the curb at the end. Particularly in the residential area. And for those that are in Imperial Village, just think of Hardwood and 116th and 117th Street, whereby they actually will park it right on the curb. We also have that in the area that is in the Century levels that's issued as well. And so, we're looking at that. In fact, if you go by the intersection of 116th and 170th on Hardwood, you'll see that people are thinking of the curb red because people that park on the curb now takes away the view when you approach that intersection. And it is also a crossway for children, and pedestrians abuse those intersections. And the last thing we need to do is have a fatality so we don't get, you know, injured. The other item I want you to know is that staff has identified a number of intersections that need the American Recapability Act for the curbs to be shaved. And that is based upon whether there's sufficient space that once you enter the sidewalk, that a wheelchair is able to go past that area. Some cases, we have challenges where there's bar hydrants, as well as light poles, that makes it cumbersome for us to be able to accommodate the ADA that is needed for that area. But I do want you to be aware of that. And so, moving right along, and since I've now got everyone's attention in the terminal to start flow, you had the staff from, from the city of Inglewood talk about water. We talked about construction, and we talked about financial help to the city, and also the demolition of those, of those buildings that we own that's on 102nd Street between Dodie and Prairie, they're all coming down by, by the summer of this year. Now, let's talk about for those that also are, that are users of Golden State Water. So, there's questions of concern, and I, I believe or not, that because I was dealing with a water main break that was on Wilkie between Hardwood and with a water main break that was on Wilkie between, um, Hard App and Hundred Nine, I said, what better way than we need to bring the representatives up so we can talk about their health, uh, their pipelines in the city of Inglewood. So please help me welcome our Golden State Water Company representative, Brad Ajari, and you can introduce the, uh, the gentleman as well. Please help Golden State Water.
Yes, thank you very much this morning. Uh, I'd also like to introduce David Cashcart. Uh, David is our chief contribution operator and, uh, so has, uh, will be sharing some inside details we can do about our program here. In the time that we have, I'd like to focus on three, three aspects. Our leaks that we've been working on, most of you that who have seen name breaks that occurred in your streets, talk a little bit about that. I'd like to talk about our name break repair schedule. Last time that we were covering is the coordination of our capital projects and some of those street resurfacing projects that Mr. Atwell mentioned here, just briefly. Uh, so again, I'd like to introduce David to talk a little bit about our leaks and our name break repair schedule.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And thanks for having me back here. I was here a couple of years ago, uh, talking on the same topic. I don't know if you recall, uh, Councilman Franklin, I was here a couple of years ago. All right. So anyway, we're here to talk about leaks, um, and what we do and how we respond to leaks. Like I said, part of Inglewood we serve is roughly around forty miles of pipe, under four thousand surface connections. I oversee the operation of fifty-five thousand surface connections, over five hundred miles of pipes. So a pretty big vast system that we cover. Uh, I don't know if you guys have realized lately, because of the weather, uh, it's been very cold even in, for California, Southern California, almost below freezing. And because of that, a lot of times utilities are impacted. So what we have seen is an increase in water main breaks, not just in Inglewood, but throughout all thirteen cities that I oversee the operations of. Uh, the city of Inglewood, so far this year, we have had five main breaks. And that's a lot considering that, uh, last year, all of Inglewood we had nine. So if it was to continue to go on this rate, we would have over forty leaks in the city of Inglewood. But I don't foresee that to happen, it's already subsided, the weather's heated up and our main breaks are starting to subside. What I want to talk about is our workflow so you guys can have a better understanding of what we do and how we respond. Every leak is called into our, when a customer sees a leak or whoever reports a leak, you guys are our eyes and ears out there in the streets. So when you guys call in a leak, it goes to our customer service center. They create what's called a field activity report that is then sent out to a representative who then goes out and investigates and determines the severity of the leak. So what, what sometimes customers don't see is when that resident, uh, operator comes out, assesses the situation, marks it for USA, which is underground service alert to you, which by law we have to do. And so the residents think that we're ignoring them, we're not. So I kind of wanted to stand by my record with my guys and let you know that we are responding, uh, very aggressively. Like I said, we're already repaired over forty-three leaks this year. And so, uh, five in Inglewood is just a small portion of what we've been doing. And you gotta remember, we've only had probably less than twenty working days this year, not to, uh, mention the, the weather. So we're very busy. And so I kind of wanted to give a response time and after this, uh, if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask as well.
So let me do a couple of things. First of all, the last time we had Golden State Water here, there was a number of you in the audience that had concerns regarding, um, seeing black, uh, in the, the cones, uh, the smell of water, uh, as well as the issue of concern where we've had some water main breaks. And of recent, I'd share with you one that was on Wilkie this year, but there was another one toward the end of last year, which was right there on Barrow and Atkinson. And people need to understand that once the contractor comes and removes the pipe that's damaged, that they also leave the area rough with the cones around it because they need for it to settle. And then they'll go ahead and put what we call a crown or cap on it to help smooth it over. So if you see it there and, and you say, well, how long are we going to leave this thing? It's been done over a month ago. Well, they're still waiting for it to settle. And also make sure that the leak is no longer an issue before it gets smoothed over. So I know there's one lady that wants to speak about this issue, so if you have the mic, go right here, just hold.
I have a mic and I find that I used to be connected. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right. I was used to be connected with, um, the Inglewood water. So what happened, Golden State taking over, hey, now I changed our meters, our prices went up. I was asking why they changed the water meter about eight years, nine years ago. They didn't give me an answer. And I find that I'm paying way more water with Golden State. And now that they've been building well over here in Inglewood, I would like to know when my water rates go down, uh, will Golden State increase my water bill? It's the highest bill I have in utilities. That's my question and I sure hope you can answer this.
Well, with the meter issue, uh, changing out the meters, that's a requirement by the PUC to make sure that.
PUC is?
There's a Public Utility Committee, California, uh, Public Utility Committee, Commission. And, and what they do is regulate us to make sure that we're complying and we're not overcharging you and we're not undercharging ourselves. So what they do is they allow for five-inch meters, that's required and we change them out every twenty years. And that, uh, length of time is decreased depending on the size of the meter. So for a one inch is every fifteen years and a larger meter, uh, two inch would be every ten years. And that's for you, for, for your benefit to know that your, uh, apparatus that's measuring your water is working correctly. And as far as the, uh, cost of water, uh, that's something that is also regulated by the PUC as well. You want to speak on that first?
So I'll try to offer some information, hopefully that you'll find helpful. With respect to our rates, Golden State, unlike public agencies, Golden State goes through a rate process or rate setting process every three years. This allows us to not only capture the cost of the commodity that we provide to you, which is the water, but also to set money aside to repair projects, a couple of which I'd like to cover here before we finish. Uh, and so, uh, with respect to your service being changed over and from the city to Golden State, I can't skip to that right now, eleven months. What I can promise you is though, is after we're finished, I'll be glad to get your number down and research that information and get back to you as far as why that switch occurred. In answer to your other question about rates going up, uh, we, we're, we're dealing with a very old water system, as Mr. Atwell pointed out. Maybe the pipelines that we manage within the city of Inglewood are sixty to eighty years old, cast iron pipe, uh, they have frequent breaks on them. And one of the things that the company is dealing as part of its capital improvement program, which I've covered in the second period, is to readdress, uh, in each of the areas that we serve, we serve eight cities from the southwest area.
Okay, any more questions? If not, let's give a hand for a place. This is a little housekeeping, just so you know that, uh, it's critical that agencies coordinate with each other. You heard about Golden State Water has their own water, water lines and all, as well as Los, uh, Inglewood has their own water lines, but that requires a team effort because we are now going to work on Century Boulevard and any of those streets that's going to go under construction, including Van Ness, including New Pearl Highway, all of those now have to get to deal with what is in term. So they're now going to be talking about now going to, uh, repair, before they repair those streets or resurface them, they're actually going to actually, uh, go in the ground and remove some of those pipes before the new services go back out, so be aware of that. Okay. A couple more presentors and then we'll be able to wrap it up. Uh, the next group I'd like to bring up has to do with the, uh, new transition, uh, the waste haulers for the city of Inglewood. We're lying, we have reached out through a referral proposal, bids were made, transition was given that the public or non-resident facilities holding services has been drawn to work for the state. Uh, they're just starting, uh, they're now within their third line. Uh, there are some transitional hiccups that we are trying to move out. And also a river of understanding, uh, as to what goes into what trash bin and when the, et cetera. So there's a team of them, but let me bring up the, uh, our public customer service representative that I knew was on a regular basis. Please help me welcome Don Harris, the municipal relationship manager.
Good morning. And thank you for having us. Um, we have completed our first four months and, um, we wanted to give you a quick update on our progress and, uh, give you some customer service information that you can use. Uh, first of all, I wanted to, um, introduce you to our new, uh, general manager. His name is Jake Fowler. And my coworker, we travel in packs here, Sam Canyon, you guys probably know. Um, you may be familiar with our previous general manager, James Castro, just wanted to let you know that he's well, he's still with the company, he's, uh, working in a different position. Um, everything that he's worked on and that, um, he planned for the city, we've been able to share all of this information and break JF2C. He has, uh, over ten years of experience, uh, experience in the greater Los Angeles area, so he's ready to rock the world here in the city of Inglewood. Uh, also wanted to make sure that you are aware that we do have an extensive, uh, customer service support base for you. We've got forty-seven customer service reps that are ready to answer for you and our phone bank. And then we also have a local office here in the city of Inglewood with a live person should you need to stop in or, and ask any questions or get any assistance. The trash cart will happen. You probably remember that in August we started out, we, um, exchanged the contain, the old containers for our containers and we picked up on the same day. It was quite hectic, but we're happy to say that we have nearly ninety-nine percent of those carts exchanged. So everyone should have the consolidated disposable containers at their homes right now. We have noticed from time to time that there are old ones that pop up here and there. And as soon as we see them, we try to snatch them right up. Uh, we actually, at the Martin Luther King event last week, we were able to see a couple of them behind the gates. So if you have some leftover or if your neighbors have some, if you would do us a favor of letting us know, we'll be happy to come and pick them up for you. I wanted to mention to you, um, one of the things that we agreed to do while we're here in the city of Inglewood is to provide employment opportunities. And we have committed to hiring twenty-six Inglewood residents. And an update on what we've, um, got going since the contract began, we each have hired three customer service reps at our call center. We have three spotters that are working at our, um, recycling facility. We have three driver helpers, we have three drivers, one supervisor, and then three Inglewood resident, residents that are involved with administrative support. Some of the efforts that we are undertaking, um, in an effort to recruit additional Inglewood residents, but it includes that we post this, post all of our positions with the South Bay Work, uh, Workforce Investment Board. We maintain, um, human resources managers that are present on Mondays at our local Inglewood office. And at that point, residents are able to stop in for career discussions. Uh, we are advertising on the Inglewood Today website and in the newspaper. And then we are offering career pathing consultations so that residents can, uh, learn what they need to do to get into, uh, positions and grow within our company. The next part I wanted to, uh, bring out to you has to do with the recycling. And we've sent out a newsletter, uh, I think it was in November, in November. And, uh, there were some questions about exactly what is recyclable, exactly what goes inside the blue containers. So I wanted to take this opportunity to make this clear. The blue container is for recycling. We have some information for you on the table out front about exactly what can go inside it, but, um, the point that we want to make this morning has to do with the, the plastic bags. Plastic bags, uh, we mentioned previously that you don't want to put any recyclable items inside the plastic bag and then put them inside the blue container. Well, as it turns out, that is perfectly acceptable. So if you want to use, um, a bag to enclose your recyclable items before you put them into the blue container, that's fine. Okay, that's perfectly acceptable. If you don't want to, you make there be any difficulties or problems with that, we can recycle it anyway. Just more convenient if you print some of the tons of what you can do that if you like. Okay. Um, also while we're talking about recycling, just wanted to make sure everybody remembers that recycling is just, it's not just bottles, cans, and newspapers anymore. You think about it, you can also throw away things like high tins, juice boxes, pill bottles, and, and we need to think about that because here in the city, you are allowed to have as many of the recyclable containers as you want at no additional charge. Same thing, if you want to have additional green waste containers, you can have those at no additional charge. It's the trash that you recycle more than you can reduce the number of trash containers that you. So please make sure that you take one of our handouts so that you can share those with your neighbors about exactly what you can recycle. Uh, speaking more about recycling, we wanted to share with you that the Christmas trees and the holiday trees that you set out are recyclable. Um, from December twenty-sixth through January twelfth, we ran a designated truck that was for Christmas trees. We collected those and then we stationed two large containers at, at two of your local parks so that we didn't have to break route. We could go through and sweep through and get the trees, park them, and then we can take them all, we took them all and dumped them so that they could be recycled, uh, at that time. And we did that and made sure that your city was able to receive your proper recycling credits for your trees. A little bit more about the service that we offer, uh, the bulk item pickup service. We collect items that don't normally fit inside your trash container, a sofa, a chair, any piece of furniture or something like, those kind of things, we will definitely pick up for you. We just ask that you call us and arrange for it because we don't know if you throw it out there, we don't know if you're keeping it for a salvage an army or goodwill or if you need it to come to us. So we just ask that you call us, we'll schedule the truck driver to come out and make sure that that gets taken care of for you. Uh, the bulk items from the residential, uh, locations and from multi-battling locations, again, they are free of charge, so we just, please call us to schedule them. Abandoned items, we do collect abandoned items from your city, uh, if they are found on the public right-of-way, we definitely will pick them up. And we work really closely with the city inspectors that are in the environmental services division. And we communicate, they, they keep us abreast of trouble spots where people like to go and, and dump. Uh, as a matter of fact, we keep a hot sheet, we call it, and councilmen and different staff have given us a list of, uh, areas and addresses where people are known to go and just kind of place things. Uh, so we check these sites on a regular basis, so we, we go through there to make sure. And as it turns out, because we're able to go through and clean up those areas, it decreases the frequency. People are not as comfortable to just go and drop off their items. All right. Um, we will be continuing the Operation Cleans Week that you've come to know through the years. The spring edition, spring edition of Operation Cleans Week, um, will include all Saturdays in May. May and the first week in June, or Saturday in June. And the way that happens, you're probably familiar with, is on, if your service day is on Monday, then that means your Cleanse Week day will be the first Saturday in May. And if your service day is on Tuesday, then your Cleanse Week day will be on the second Saturday of May, so on. During that same time, we will also conduct a annual bike drive. And at that time, we would ask that you, residents, would set out bicycles that you're not using anymore or that need to be repaired or those things. We will collect those during the bike drive and bring them back to our office and repair and refurbish them. And then we will work with local agencies to see that they get returned to people in the community that need them. So if you have any questions about that, please feel free to give us a call. Otherwise, we'll be looking for your bikes out there. And finally, wanted to give you some customer service information about your local office. So if you have your pencils ready. Any Inglewood resident, one of any of our customers that might need assistance in person, we do have a local office located at 110 South La Brea, Suite 210. 110 South La Brea, Suite 210, strategically located right across the street from City Hall. And what we have there, in Mondays, we have our human resources representatives there that can talk to you about employment opportunities. We have shredding capabilities there, we maintain a shredder there, so that if you like, you can bring in some documents, we'll shred them for you at the sign. Or we have a locking container that you can simply dump your shred items into. And then on Fridays, when they're collected, they'll be taken down to our facility down here in Gardena where they just shred everything. So we have that to operate there. The local office there is open Mondays through Fridays from eight to noon and then from one to five. And then on Saturdays, we're open there as well, and that's from eight to noon. And while you're still writing, let me give you the direct line. So we have the eight-hundred-two-nine-nine-four-eight-ninety. That's your eight-hundred number. And then there is a local number, and that's three-ten-four-three-six-seven-three-four-one. And that is for the local office manager. So you can call or you can go in person. The last thing that I really wanted to leave you with is just a quick update on February ninth, we will be conducting a shred event here. At that time, there will be an e-waste collection service going on at eight, or eight, eight-eight. And at the same, so you'll be able to bring in your e-waste for a drop-off and we'll make sure that it gets recycled. And then at the same time, if you feel like it, we can bring in large items for, large amount of items for shred and we'll make sure that they get shredded on the spot. And that concludes our customer service update. Is there a question or comment? Yes, sir.
Do you need to get the light to jump over here? A couple of comments, one here, one there.
Yes, sir. One of the things I have a pet peeve, recycle, we get, the city gets a sort of kickback from recycled foods. Pretty sure on every street in the city of Inglewood and probably in America, we have scavengers. And when your company first took over, the blue recycle trucks came out very early, that stuff before the scavengers could get. But lately, my street recycle truck doesn't even get there until about two, too early in the afternoon. By then, your shoes cluttered up with trash, these guys dump cans over, get what they want, and they, you know, their bikes or their shopping carts and they all go. Do we have a set time, or can we get a set time when these trucks can pick up our recyclable? Now, I'm gonna put mine out here, I think it's about time these guys are coming. And it doesn't mean I can go somewhere, my set is good enough.
Well, you know, something I actually do not have a set time, and I'm not familiar with your particular area, but I'd be happy to take your address and I'll see if I can get some other information for you so you can know when. Typically, we ask that the containers be set out in the morning so that we can have opportunity, the drivers have to start someplace and they have to end up someplace. So everybody can't be first, but certainly I can take a look at what we have operationally and see if I can get you some better information.
We have a question up here. For somebody.
Yeah, good morning. I may ask you about the billing also on your company. Because I, the billing, I mean, the money, the amount, the billing every month?
Billing?
Yeah. It's every month, ever since you guys took over, since September, it was thirty-eight dollars for some sense. Then October was about forty dollars. November is forty-one, December is forty-two, and now it's forty-three. So what come, until what time you're gonna start raising up our?
The rates?
The rates.
The rates, I mean, the rates. There are actually, I'm not a flagrant city manager, come up here as well. The rates are regulated by the council and the city manager's enforcement, and then the notification goes out to you. They should, there should not be only one increase that went into effect, and that was November the first. So if there's another increase that's on your bill, we need to review it because it's only gonna be one, and I'm looking for the city manager, please come, to address that. But my understanding, and I'm worried, that there was only one increase that went, Patrick, would you come in and talk about it? Someone else has to.
Yes, you're right, Councilor, there was an increase in December of last year, and there'll be another increase December of this year. There might be a number of different reasons why your water, meanwhile, you're so far sewer bills may have gone on, our trash bill may have gone on. And I was pretty attuned with our customer service rep and letters and see what's his situation, but in terms of rate increase, we should not have.
You know, I'm also maybe thinking about, there was an increase on the sewer line, sewer increase, so it comes on the same bill. So maybe that's part of it that gave you that increase. Couple more questions, we can move on. Yes, sir.
Yes, I just want to make a comment about the service. The trash people comes by my way, and my trash is usually picked up around there upon, and I'm very happy, I understand Terry's comment, but I'm very happy with the service that I get.
All right, thank you. And just also, I think Commissioner Coleman who ran that up, the concern that I get from the residents is what is the priority bins that you pick up? And the concern was, are the recyclable bins gonna be picked up before the kitchen waste bins, which is the black bin? And the reason for that is that you help keep costs contained, recycling of the content in the blue bins helps suppress the potential increase. And so the outcry that I get from the residents is, can we shift the priority? In the past, it was the black bins picked up first because of the smell. But now it's become a new issue of the amount of scavengers that play on these blue recyclable bins that in turn may not get deposited in the cities, we get a ton of credit for it. So that's been the concern. And also, it's terrible when you have your blue bins that you put out by six AM in the morning, and by ten o'clock in the morning, it's been thrashed through. And the people that go through the bins are not courteous to restore the remainder they didn't want back in the bin, but leave it on our curbsides. Can you talk about that? Are your Jake van as a priority? Take that into consideration. Yeah, you wanna come up here? Let me introduce Angela Williams. Angela Williams is our city employee that oversees the waste hauling agreement. Angela Williams.
I just wanted to bring your attention, good morning, thank you. We also have scavenger patrol staff out there. So if you'd like to get their telephone number, I can get that to you as well, because they're out there by six o'clock in the morning making sure that scavengers are not scrubbing the surface. So we have them placed as of September, so we would like to keep the information and make them take that down. We have the patrol of the area that has experienced a high scavenger activity. The telephone number for the scavenger is three-ten-four-one-two-eight-six-two-two. Three-ten-four-one-two-eight-six-two-two.
All right. Any other question? Not, was scared about Don Harris' hand and his stuff. Thank you, sir. Okay, the last slide before I bring it up. Be sure that, we got this in the mail that talked about the waste hauling and which is gonna be picked up. And also today you receive the suggestions or instructions about which items goes in which bin. So be sure that you share this with neighbors that was not able to make it here today so we can make sure that. Also, you should have received in your packet the street sweeping days, particularly if a, if a holiday falls during the week, which is the day that you normally have your street swept, it will not be swept the following day. It'll be swept the following week on your regular street sweeping day. So you do make a note of that. The last slide I'm gonna bring up is now dealing with your own safety and concern. We were blessed a couple of weeks ago of having the fire department representative come to talk to us at the city council meeting and was concerned for public safety and your own personal safety. And in the course of that, he also provided us with smoke detectors for everyone in the audience. So here today is our distinguished Fire Captain Brian Jordan of the Los Angeles County Department.
Well, thank you for having me here today. It's only been going eleven forty and I can speak till eleven fifty. I think it's eleven fifty-one. Anyways, we're gonna cover real quick a few important things. Carbon monoxide detectors, it's January first, it's passed, so everybody's got carbon monoxide detector in your home, even your rental units, you know, your rental units. You need to have carbon monoxide detectors in your rental units. Carbon monoxide detectors are not smoke detectors, they're actually the carbon monoxide alarms. Carbon monoxide alarms kind of look like these, you put them on the wall to protect the carbon monoxide. Carbon monoxide detectors go into somebody's fire alarm system. The smoke detectors, and I believe you all have one of them, these are ten-year smoke detectors donated by Home Depot and K. The easiest way to use these, take the smoke detector, connect it to the racket, twist it, now it works. These smoke detectors have a couple buttons on them. One of them is a test button, and you push and hold the test button, it'll make a lot of noise after about five seconds. And then you can touch your smoke detector, like, that's how it works. It also has a hush button, like I tell everybody, that does not work when you're stopped. So it just works on the smoke detector. What I'm gonna talk to you now is kind of like I'm on a fire region, I'm driving up to your house, and this is what we're looking at whether it's a medical call or a private mission inspection. So when we drive up, the first thing we're looking for is the address. So make sure you have an address in front of your house, or at least three inches later, sometimes five inches, depending on the car and the street you are. We need to know where your house is. A lot of people know where they live, but we don't. So at two in the morning, when we're looking for your address and you're having a heart attack and you live down that long driveway in the back, we don't know you're there. So we figure it out, we look at other people's addresses and walk down and find you. You need to have your address visible from the street. When walking out, some people have Christmas trees next to their fireplace that's going in, it's January twenty-sixth. And that's not good. And fortunately, that Christmas tree is not hot in fire, so take that Christmas tree, take that holiday tree, take it outside, you're gonna go recycle it. It gives us a Christmas tree out of the house. We walk into the hallways and we see missing smoke detectors, and that's what's easy for it. Make sure you get a smoke detector. So people don't have fire extinguishers accessible in front of their kitchens. You do not have to put your fire extinguisher next to your stove, that's where the fire alarm's at. Put your fire extinguisher somewhere where you know where it is, where you can get to it. Depending on people's ability to move around the house, some people may be ready to the wall. We go on foot and fall calls, and we look in this house, we walk in and we see a really nice tile, that was the least expensive tile in the world, and one drop of water, it slipped off, and it slipped off. So you think about checking your driveway, I don't. A million things in the house can go wrong, and you look at all these lights, all these Christmas lights, all these stereo systems, and you look at, one of the extinguishers were right into the wall, you touched that wall, the wall's hot, unfortunately had to cause fires. So you need to make sure your electrical systems in your home are proper. Normally, everything in the wall is fire. We messed it up, we put too many, as human beings, we connect too many things to the... Any of you have those power strips towards the home? Anybody have a power strip connected to the power strip and the power? That's what happens, and the first power strip gets really, really hot. And they do come with circuit breakers, sometimes they all, some are like, some are not. Let me get back to Christmas trees real quick. You may not have a Christmas tree in your house, but make sure your neighbors don't have some, if you know anybody who does, go and do that. And if you pick it up, drag it outside, that's a good thing. And you know it's dead, it's, it's, you can't have it. When you're driving, go leave the house for a minute. When you're driving, it has it all over anywhere, not just Inglewood, out there where I'm staying. When you're driving and you see red lights or sirens, you pull to the right. So I like to tell people, pull to the right for sirens or red lights. It's really simple. People don't do that, they pull to the left, it's got some type of protection at home. So we're trying to get somewhere, so. So the home's fire safety is not only the home, obviously, it's us trying to get to your home. Let's get back in the house, so we're gonna skip through the house and go up to the back door, we see that really nice swimming pool, we know it's dangerous, you need to have a fence around the pool. Children drown without sanitizer in the afternoon. And we have, we go enjoy golf, and everybody always tells us, hey, everybody, have a fence around the pool, make sure your friends who have kids around the pool, make sure they know how to swim, and make sure you know how to swim, because you can fall in and lose your kids. Okay, let's get back in the house, let's go into the, let's pick a little, we talked about tiles in the bathroom, we talked about the kitchen, your fan, your exhaust fan in the kitchen. Make sure you actually clean the grease trap on the exhaust fan, and make sure your stove is clean. And we're gonna slide right over into the laundry room where they wash and dryer are, we're gonna make sure we can, that dryer lint trap that some of us have had issues for years. And we're gonna make sure the dryer lint trap is empty, that way the air can move through. If the air doesn't move through, it builds up, it gets hotter sometimes, and we have laundry room fires, happens all the time. I know I'm short on time, like, I talk all day, they told me in ten minutes, but I know I'm gonna have to. So right now, I wanna ask real quick, does anybody have any safety questions so far? Safety questions?
Safety questions? Anybody?
Yes, sir.
I have a fire scene, I have a fire scene.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of fire scenes. And I know it's only happened, if I'm, please, if they're in the open place, but...
How old are they? How old are they? Well, more than a year, they get tested every year. So if they're, it sounds like they're fifteen-year-olds. The best thing to do is purchase a new fire, purchase a new fire extinguisher.
Well, they can't be reviewed?
You can, but by the time you're done paying for one or two, you're really better off with buying a new one.
And how are you disposed of?
We do, the fire department doesn't actually have a disposal program. You can call your local fire extinguisher company, and they can tell you actually how it works. Anybody else? So everybody, when you're driving home today in the rain, you see those red lights and sirens, you're gonna pull to the right for sirens or red lights. When you get home, you're gonna check that smoke detector, correct? You know what you're checking? There's a sound you're living with.
All right. Any more questions? Is there that sound you're living with? But the other thing is, I know, and check it, you know, and check it. But some of you, now, this is the battery that's good for ten years, and once it's out, it's out, you replace the entire unit. But some of us still have the ones that have battery operated. When's the last time you replaced the battery?
Every six months.
Every time you lack? Or when do you need it? So it gives off a little sound. Every time it bleeds, so, all right. All right, but keep that in mind, you guys, never the homicides that occur, your people passing, the sip of your eyes, a smoke alarm, and you're like, put the battery back in, or the battery went dead, eh, another one. And so it's those critical times when you need it the most. And so we want to thank Captain Jordan for coming today. I have everyone, take one home, make sure you use it. And also, would you just explain to them the location where it should be, how high it should be from the ceiling or on the wall?
Sure. Make sure your smoke detectors at least split from the ceiling, twelve inches from the ceiling or the wall, preferably on the ceiling and twelve inches from the wall, or on the wall, twelve inches from the ceiling. When you get home, open that box up, connect the smoke detector and you'll activate it. When you get home, open that box up, connect the smoke detector, and you'll activate it, and at least put it on a high shelf in the house, if you don't have any smoke detector. And that way it'll be protected already, it still needs to go on the wall or the ceiling, but if you forget, you still have that smoke detector working. There's that old tale out there about the, you know, I forgot to tell you, you wanna know how to save some money? You wanna know how to save some money? Christmas coming up next year, buy everybody a smoke detector, that's all you gotta get to. $20, you're good. If I'm on here, you spend a dollar, and I'm gonna put that reform, so you save a lot of money for Christmas gifts. The smoke detector, there's a story out there about a smoke detector that was a present for someone, if you search, and it was flowering in the house, and that smoke detector was wrapped in the box, and it actually, so smoke detectors are good, they don't have to be on the wall or ceiling to work, but they're required to be on the wall and ceiling to work. Sir, agree?
Oh, yeah, I have a question. Do you need a smoke detector in each room? Like I have one in each one of my bedrooms.
You want one at least in the hallway and one in every bedroom, because that's better protection.
Okay.
Yeah, same with the carbon monoxide detector, you want one in the hallway, but you want one in every bedroom. Because if a fire starts in the bedroom in the room you're in, you'd want to know it's early to possible.
Okay, I have a question, do you have any spare, I was talking to that.
There should be one, did you get a black man?
I have one, but I need two more.
And again, it's so bad, it's the thing with the water, you know, we saved some, so we'll see what's left outside.
All right, that's the last question. Before we conclude, we did talk about a lot of the written material that I made available for you, and I just wanna expand on one before we close. You should have received in your packet regarding the Free Income Tax Preparation and Family Service Event. The chairman of the board, the California Board of Equalization, Jeroe Wood, has worked with the number of state agencies to make sure that, we wanna help those that are entitled to refunds when they do their income tax, that there's some tax credits out there that people may not even know about. And so in your packet, you will see that those that qualify that your household income is $51,000 or less, that there's locations that they will do for you free. They also will provide for low-cost and free medical services that will be made available, job preparation assistance, food and nutritional services, discounts on telephone services, and also low cost auto insurance. So look at your sheets that's in there, and my own age, are you gonna share this information that you got here today with your neighbor or friend? Because, you know, we all are resources, and it's critical that we take advantage of it. And so on behalf of the city of Inglewood, your councilman, your public servants, I just wanna thank everyone for being here today, and again, Happy New Year and onward for progress for the city of Inglewood. God bless you all, thank you.